Someone want to try again?
There's nothing was coming through, but maybe now it is now.
This is...
You're not hearing anything, are you?
It could come through my machine if I try to.
Yeah, this is Kelly. I can hear you. Just believe you can hear me.
I'm good.
Yeah, whoever you are, I can hear you.
Yep, this is Kelly. We'll wait and see if they are able to hear us in the boardroom.
All righty.
Sterns County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First, we'll do the roll call. Randy?
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Persky?
Here.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Here.
Commissioner Notch?
Here.
Commissioner Bertram?
Here.
Two of us have colds, so we're gonna sound terrible, but we're gonna get through this. Please all stand and observe a moment of silence and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the agenda is before us. Motion in order to approve the agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Commissioner Notch moves the agenda. Commissioner Persky seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 I heard Lee say aye. Pose same sign, okay? Presentation of awards. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, April is National County Government Month and Sterns County, like all counties in Minnesota, provide many public services that are critical to the public safety and well-being of everyone in the county. And additionally, we know that the programs and services we provide wouldn't be possible without the work of our dedicated staff, so we also want to recognize Public Service Recognition Week, which is from May 4th to May 10th, which is, again, a time that we honor our dedicated public servants, our employees. And the proclamation supports County Government Month and expresses appreciation for the dedicated public servants that carry out the important work of counties. And if you want me to read them, certainly happy to do that, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Whereas April is National County Government Month, a time to honor the vital role county governments play in providing essential services and fostering community engagement across our nation. And whereas the employees of Sterns County are responsible for fulfilling a broad spectrum of community needs, including infrastructure maintenance, health management, local economic investment, public safety, and support for veterans. And whereas the dedicated staff of Sterns County exemplifies commitment and service, contributing their time, skills, and expertise for the benefit of our community. Whereas public servants are essential to maintaining continuity in our democracy, ensuring that government remains responsive to the needs of its citizens. Now therefore, we, the Sterns County Board of Commissioners, proclaim April 25th as National County Government Month, encouraging all residents to learn more about the valuable services provided by their local government. We also celebrate Public Service Recognition Week from May 4th to May 10th in honor of all public servants, past and present, whose exceptional dedication enriches our communities and improves the quality of life for all. Signed, Jeff Bertram, County Chair.
Not yet, but I will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you for that, and I think I had acted a little slowly. This also happens to be Public Health Week. So while we're acknowledging the good work of county workers this week, especially with the cuts that the Department of Health just took, the extra work our staff is doing cross-departementally is acknowledged and appreciated.
Thank you. There's also two other things, but I'll wait until issues by commissioners. It's a busy month evidently for recognizing people, so.
That's good. Next item would be the consent agenda. It contains 14 items. I'll ask that F-13 be removed, so I can abstain from that one. So a motion would be in order unless someone wants something else pulled to approve the consent item, item, the 13 items on the consent after that removal.
If nobody's gonna pull anything else, I'll move items 1 through 14 with the exclusion of 13.
Okay, there's a second.
Second.
Commissioner Clark seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Passes. Then F-13, just move it and...
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Were we supposed to vote on the resolution before?
Yeah.
Because it says approve proclamation.
That we have to vote on that. So you can sign it.
I leave those details up to Mike.
Let's finish this and come back.
You can go back to it.
Okay.
I'll move item 13 on the dairy advisory committee.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, actually, the conversation had been to bring forward Michael McAndrews. The other applicant actually is serving on other committees, and we're trying to have more people on more things. So I would, I guess I would respectfully request, we're working on recruiting some other members for this.
So do we wanna, do we not want to act on this then?
I think we wanted to modify it and move, I was surprised when I saw this. I thought it was only gonna have Mr. McAndrews on it.
Well...
What, was the action to approve one person there?
Two.
We...
Two.
Then, okay.
It was the second person wasn't supposed to be coming to us because we're trying to not have people, the same people serving on multiple committees.
I think Mike and I talked about that before the meeting. There's, I don't think we're quite there yet. There's a lot of people that are in multiple committees, but I think that's a goal, and I think I said, my thought was that, you know, one or two, and that's it. So, but I mean, we never really discussed that during the time I was here, but I agree with that. We should spread it apart.
Mr. Chair, we don't have that in our policy, but we certainly discussed that when we...
We do have that in our guidelines about the committees.
I went back and looked at what we did and...
I'd be happy to go find it again for you.
Part of the problem is, one, especially with the dairy advisory, we haven't been able to get anybody on it. It's one thing when you've got two, three applicants, that's great. But if you don't have any applicants, and that's part of the problem, but yeah, I guess I'm pulling it because of the potential conflict. So if you want to pull it and move it forward, I guess, whatever. Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, I guess, you know, kind of reviewed through this with Randy too, because I was assuming it was maybe just gonna be Mr. McAndrews. But, you know, I guess, at this point, because we're gonna be down a couple more again, I'd be okay if we want to, you know, keep who we have on the agenda today. But if, if people feel otherwise, I'm okay with that too.
I think that's probably a long-term discussion, I would guess.
So he needs the producer category?
Yeah.
I thought that he didn't need the producer category.
There's two producer positions that are currently need to be filled. These were the only two applicants. There will be another one that comes up in June. I don't know if Carl is able to be reappointed or not.
I think he's expiring, but there's actually one, one business person, not right now, and one producer.
Right.
Because Matt Bruett, you know, had to resign or he moved.
This has nothing to do with that human being. He's a perfectly good human being, but we're looking for a producer for this particular slot.
Correct, because Mike would, well, Mike would be the producer.
Right.
And then we still have one business.
And we need a business person, so we don't, I mean, we're not just trying to put bodies in there, we're trying to fill slots.
So I think the Commissioner Notch's point, and I think this is, Randy's been working on this for over a year, you know, and nothing seems to come to a head. So as we keep muddling along, I guess my gut reaction would be, even though I've been abstaining, is that we approve this, work through that, and then get to where we want to or need to get to. That, that would be my gut.
Mr. Chair.
Let's make a decision.
There's been some question about whether or not we actually are gonna be able to keep having this, so I have some concern about adding, somebody just to add a body if they're not a producer or a business. I mean, if we have one producer slot, we should fill the producer slot. The other person's a business person, that's fine.
These, these two, my understanding is, we need two producers, there's two openings, four producers, and both these fill those slots.
They do.
I did look at qualifications, and they do both need the qualifications. That being said, you know, none of them really filled out their applications so much.
No, they didn't.
If I knew they were gonna be on another committee, I maybe would have questioned it more, but I didn't, I didn't know that at the time.
So I think we've all made our feelings known. I'm gonna abstain, so I'm not gonna make the motion, but if I would, I'd make the motion to approve these and move on, but somebody make a motion so we can move on.
I've already made that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a second?
I'll second it.
Well, if we keep bopping around a little bit more, you keep me on top. So Commissioner Persky moves to approve the recommendations. Commissioner Notch seconds it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And I abstain. Okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to, as far as our policy about people on committees, you know, I do think we are where we want to be. I mean, we want to advocate that we spread it around, that we make the opportunities for a broader base. However, I think in situations like this, oftentimes, we're stuck with a lack of candidates that want to participate. And those are the, that allows us to keep maybe good people that are still in positions or want to share those positions. Likewise, some of the positions are, are very active, and they meet monthly and include site visits perhaps. But then you've got others that are maybe not meeting that often, that are maybe once quarterly or even, you know, biannually or whatever. And, and so by all means, I think keeping it flexible allows us to get the best people that we can. By all means, we want to spread the, the service around, but I think we're okay where we are with what we're doing.
And I'm not sure, it was a big deal a couple years ago about how long their chairs and all that stuff. I don't know who's monitoring that, if that's still a big deal or not. But like you said, we didn't have to do the policy, Mike, maybe we should just, what is that? I guess, I don't remember talking about that during the two years I've been here. So maybe we should look at that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, and that is one of the items that is in the policy, that they'll rotate the chair of those committees. And there's a few other guidelines in there as well, but we can review it.
We maybe should relook at the, the whole thing, because obviously committees like Board of Adjustment, Planning Commission, you know, the watershed districts, you know, those are more important, and we seek those candidates out as we should because they're more important. But we maybe should get this on our radar as far as the long-term stuff.
And Mr. Chair, hopefully you won't consider this too much of a conflict. I think they're all important. They're just have different, different topics. We start, we search hard for people with expertise that are for our human service-related ones. We have some people who absolutely would love to be on every single committee we can, and that's why we actually came up with this to begin with, and really appreciate their willingness to serve. And we, we actually, if we're, if we're searching out, this is really the only committee we've had any challenges of getting, and that's partially very unfortunate because we have less dairy producers than we once had.
Okay, anything more on that? If not, administration, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got three items under administration. The first is to discuss a joint meeting with Sherburne County and Benton County about the Regional Airport Commission. And the three board chairs met, and you saw the recommendation, and I would certainly expect Chair Bertram to speak to this too, but the, the thoughts between those parties were that we would arrange a meeting with two commissioners from each county and the administrator, a couple of members from the Airport Commission there as a resource, not necessarily as to give presentations. And, but without the city of St. Cloud present. The Sherburne County Board is going to be meeting with the Airport Commission, much like we did months ago on April 15th, and so after that, I assume we would begin to schedule the, the meeting that's been suggested. So really what we're looking for here is some agreement on the arrangements that the, that the three board chairs are recommending. And then if we do agree with that, then we would need to know what commissioners are gonna represent the Sterns County Board at that meeting.
So Mike asked me to talk to the three, the two other chairs, which I did. Commissioner Pop in Benton County, Commissioner Gray in Sherburne County, and that's how we got to this point. And then I reported that back to, to Mike and, and to the other two chairs, and that's what brought us today. So because of your direction, that's what I did. This is what we came up with, so Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Williams, just for the public, could you please state what the goal is for this meeting? Things have gotten a little hot, and so hopefully it's not just eventing. One, I mean, I too have had conversations with folks in the other boards as well. I mean, I think we all have. So I think it's a good idea to have a meeting, but what's the goal?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark, it wasn't a, I, I know we've all talked about it. I wasn't bragging that I talked to the chairs. What I said was Mike told me to talk to the chair.
No, no, I know.
Yep. So I know we've all talked to the chairs, so we're all on the same playing field, but, so Mike, your response?
On the goal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah. I think we would, we would jointly develop an, an agenda for this meeting, but I think the goal is just to get some clarity on where we want to go in the future. As we all know, the Airport Commission was proposing last year to impose a property tax, which they have full authority to do, but did that really without any conversation with or notice to the four partners to the agreement. And as you suggest, Commissioner Clark, that caused a little commotion, and I think we just want to sort that out. And if there's some changes that we want to make in the future that improve communications, or there's things that we can do that make, make the three or four governing bodies more comfortable with the arrangement, maybe there's some things we could do there. So I, I think that's in very broad terms what the focus would be. Once we know the logistics here, then I would suggest that the administrators would come together and try to create an agenda. If we want the two, however we would do that, we would create an agenda that everybody could agree to.
Thank you.
Several board members, obviously, that are on the three counties have not seen this until now, the last year. We were not a part of it, and so now that a lot of us have looked at it, there's certainly ideas about limiting the levy, how the levy gets placed on, on tax statements, things like that. Just the discussion part, so yep, that's why, that's why the three counties kind of suggested what we do. So what Benton feels extremely strongly about two commissioners from each county, which I agree with, but Benton has a real strong feeling about that. So I think at this point, what we'd have to decide is who the two are from Sterns County.
Mr. Chair, I'll tell you what. I remember that dialogue, and I was pretty heavily involved in that dialogue in hearing from all three counties, from each commissioner almost, because it was somewhat contentious about what we were actually going to do. I would just like to see, make sure that we have some type of balance and compromise and some accountability for what was said and what was put in the contract. And I would be willing to serve on that and, and be part of that, because again, I, I think we need to make sure that we do it right. If we, we want to see the airport be successful, but we want to have some type of accountability for what the promises that were made and also where we thought we were supposed to be going.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. The one thing I heard from everybody that I've talked to on the boards, and I would assume everybody else has heard the same thing, is everybody wants the airport to succeed. I mean, there's nobody that wants to shut down the airport. We just don't want it to be a black hole, so I guess that, that's the sense that I've gotten. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I think the idea that has been floated about limiting the levy authority is a good one. And I do think it would be helpful to have somebody from St. Cloud on it, so I'm going to offer to be a part of that. It's part of the reason why, I thought, our board has, we, we've got different parts of our, our county and different interests that are involved. I think we all share the desire to want to make sure this has the contract and fiscal responsibility. I am also concerned though, I'm concerned about limiting the number of people participating, but I am concerned about not having anybody from the city there to answer questions, because part of what we heard was them going backwards on what was promised as part of the work. I mean, there would be a less of a, a temperature or desire to attempting to use levy authority. For example, if the city was still offering or paying for the in-kind, as was part of the original conversation, if not agreement.
And I think what I'm hearing is the concern is the representation. We, we, the counties, this is a, it's kind of like the parents. If, if you're gonna try to tell your, your child what they can or can't do, the mother and father kind of have to be on the same page if you're gonna be affected before you tell the child what is gonna happen. And so the counties in and of themselves are the ones that are gonna be affected by the levy, not the city. And so the city's doing their deal. That's why the feeling was so strong from Benton County's perspective, and I agree with that, is that for, first, we gotta get the parents together and say, okay, let's come to terms with what we think this should be. Then, this is only the first meeting. Future meetings certainly would need to involve the city and should involve the city, but at first, we have to know where we're going, otherwise we're not gonna know when we get there.
So, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark?
Commissioner Bertram, you foresee a number of meetings. Again, I think part of this is to what end, and then frankly, we're gonna have to have our board involved in this. We're not gonna have, I get it, so I'm, I'm just saying there are concerns about how this gets approached and how we actually address it, especially with temperatures being so hot. I very much am concerned, as you've heard me say from the beginning, about how this plays out, how decisions are being made, particularly with taxpayer dollars, and how contracts are, are come to in the future. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that they may go off and make decisions while we're having a lot of good conversations, but probably this needs to be structured in a very short amount of space with meetings on top of each other to get to a conclusion quickly, so that we can all be in a good and similar place. So whether it's two, three, four meetings, let's make sure it gets done quickly.
And I agree. And again, we really don't know, at least I don't know, what exactly we should be talking about, and again, the first meeting would get us to come to agreement of, okay, these are the top three issues or four issues. And then that's when we would potentially bring in the full boards or however we want to do that. But first, we have to kind of get together and say, okay, where are we gonna go on a summer trip this summer? And then once we decide it's gonna be Grand Marie, well then we gotta decide when and where we stop. I love analogies, don't you?
I'm not sure that one works.
Commissioner Notch?
Whatever.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I'm assuming this is kind of a closed-door meeting with just who's on the list here? You know, I just get concerned that there's enough people that are gonna be in this group that were there when this was approved
Right.
that can articulate exactly what transpired. I mean, I'll, I'll admit, you know, when this came up, the thought of replacing equipment was not even, I don't think in anybody's mind, you know, when the city said, hey, we're gonna contribute this much for 10 years. You know, I'm not, not saying it's really all on the city. I guess part of it is, you know, our group of thinkers, we didn't think through it probably as detailed as we should. You know, like having an inflationary clause in the 10, you know, as the years went long. But I just want to make sure that this grouping's gonna have enough people that can articulate what happened, how it happened, you know, what's going on, and not that it just becomes a, you know, we're all mad at the city of St. Cloud because, or the Airport Authority or whoever, you know, whether it's reneging on it or this, you know, came up. I mean, it was probably a bad choice of how they introduced this, you know, versus saying, hey, let's have meetings with the respective counties and say, here's our issues. You know, we, we need to bring these forward. We want you guys to know first. Would it, would it probably have been the better view, but unfortunately, that wasn't the view that was given to us. So, you know, we're dealing with what we have now, so.
And I, I lose track. I wasn't here. I can't remember. I know you were.
We all were.
Commissioner Persky was, and Commissioner Lenzmeyer, were you here when it voted? Okay, so four of you were voted on it. And I know, again, not that, not that that matters, but I wa, I did watch this closely. I definitely, you know, shared my opinions with Commissioner Notch and Persky and others who would listen. I was concerned about it becoming a black hole back then, and Commissioner Notch did vote against it. Commissioner Persky voted for it. Obviously, Lenzmeyer and Clark voted for it. Not that that matters, but it gives a perspective. I think what Commissioner Notch is saying makes sense. You, you want a perspective of one, someone that was here when it was approved, and then not just people that have voted for it to give it a perspective, might put a spin on it too. It just seems to me, of course, the power of the chair, as limited as it is, it would seem to me that, you know, the chair and the vice chair would be a, a good approach to do it. But again, that's me being simplistic.
And Mr. Chair, I'd be okay if, you know, someone from the east side of St., you know, Sterns County wants to, you know, because you would obviously represent, you know, the western half, you could say, of the county. So, I mean, I'm okay if, you know, one of the others wants to be on there just for a different perspective, but...
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark?
I would be okay with your suggestion, although I do still have concerns. Again, I'm the only commissioner who is likely to participate in any of this, who lives in the city of St. Cloud, even though people have St. Cloud in four districts. I have some concern about that. I believe that this first meeting, it would make sense for it to be two, and then I think it needs to be more people after that, so. That will be my suggestion.
Yeah, okay.
And I will, I will move having the chair and vice chair represent us.
That's, I was gonna say, I'm okay with that if that's the direction we want to go.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion's been raised by Commissioner Clark to have myself and Commissioner Notch serve in this committee, seconded by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Lee's trying to say something.
Clarification, that means chair and vice chair, does that mean that rotates then? Does the chair and vice chair change every year?
Can somebody do sign language? I can't hear.
I think he said, he was talking about us changing, it's just for this meeting, Lee. Mr. Chair?
This would be, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, this would be a, a short-lived committee. I, I can't even imagine it going till the end of the year, so we wouldn't have any change in those, in the chair or vice chair.
All right. Thank you.
And again, Mr. Chair, I think it's really important that the sooner others are included, the better. So figure out what that approach looks like.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, if there's changes to the bylaws, for example, or the, you know, the agreement, obviously, all, all four entities are gonna need to take action on that. So at some point, we do need to involve more people.
Yep, that sounds good.
And Mr. Chair, I would just maybe suggest recap after the meeting be sent out to the rest of the commissioners, just so you have an idea, you know, what was talked about.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Clark?
I think that's a good idea, and perhaps if there's any particular concerns that people would like to see addressed, we can give it to Dr. Williams and the two of you.
Okay, so the motion was to appoint myself and Commissioner Notch to this working group. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion passes. Okay, meeting with the legislative delegation.
Yes, the next item is to discuss just that. Excuse me, the, our legislative delegation will be presumably available locally next week as they have a break. And it's been suggested by, by both AMC and MICA, and I think it's a good idea that we try to engage with them. My thought, as I said in the cover sheet, or that it might be... My thought, as I said in the cover sheet, or that it might be difficult to arrange a meeting of the full board and of all our delegation, like we try to do better maybe if you as individuals or ones and twos, and if you want some staff available, try to schedule some times to visit with our legislators in the next week. We have a number of issues that are, you know, not even really associated with our specific issues this year, you know, the governor's budget and a number of other things that are shifting, shifting costs to counties or reductions in revenues to counties that, if we calculate them now, we're like in the area of 10% increase in property tax. And that's without even considering normal increases in our increased costs for our programs and services. That's just the shifts and some of the reduced revenue. So, and then, then we also have a couple of issues that are very specific to the financing of our Jail Justice Center that are, that are critical to save some dollars as well. So if the board is willing to do, to try to do that with our delegation in the next, next week, we would, of course, help you with the information so that you can have those talking points. And again, if we want staff to be involved in some of those, we certainly can try to arrange that. So that was the thought, anyway, rather than try to arrange a group meeting that I think would be difficult to do.
Commissioner Persky.
Mike, what were you, were you thinking about making visits down to St. Paul? Were you thinking about doing phone calls or trying to arrange personal meetings? What were you thinking?
They should have, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the legislators are off next week, so they won't be in St. Paul. So the thought was, you know, if you can have coffee with some of them or phone call, phone call at the very least, but certainly sit down with them and kind of run through some of those major issues that we're facing. That was the thought.
And then you'll, you'll have the bullet points.
Yes.
You'd want us to. And then we maybe should somehow coordinate, you want all of us to contact all of them? Or are we going to kind of say, you know, you two kind of contact, like, obviously, Commissioner Clark, contact St. Cloud people? And how do you want to do that? Maybe just define it that we kind of look like we know what we're doing?
Yeah, yeah, I definitely think that, Mr. Chair, that.
It always helps.
That, that you should be contacting those that, you know, represent your area and that you have relationships with. I, I don't think you should be contacting everyone, but I think we should try to cover them all, yes.
And what we could do is, like, let's just say it's a follow-up email, I think would be helpful, even if you do a personal visit, to do a follow-up email, then we could copy the rest of the commissioners, whomever is meeting with whom, that it does look like we're all five involved, and yet, one person made the point of contact, you know, would be just my two cents. Commissioner Clark.
Mr. Chair, I like that. I think we have to be a little careful about even the appearance of the open meeting law, but we can figure that part out, or we can have sent something to Dr. Williams or whatever, because I think them seeing it, and part of the idea with this is making sure the public knows about what is happening. I mean, the proposals are going to directly mean tax increases across the state. And at this point in time, it just is being talked about, at best, is cost shifts. And it's like there's magical money. The only money that there would be to pay for any of these extra things is increasing property taxes. So legislators and the governor will be proposing that property taxes are increased. So for anybody who's out there saying, no more taxes, or we're not doing tax increases, that is not accurate. And so it's really behooves all of us to be having those communications, but then helping the public understand. So another idea is, what else can we be doing with, whether it's the radio or TV, just making sure we're getting information out. And we've got different ways of doing that, but let's make sure that it doesn't become a surprise after session, that what's be attempted here is pain getting passed in the form of property taxes. Because honestly, otherwise, what they would be doing is is cutting services. And I think they don't really want to do that. They just want to pass the taxes on.
And when we were in St. Paul, what I told legislators is, if you're not going to do the funding, then cut the mandate.
Absolutely.
Because then, then, then do cut the services, which will affect people. However, that's better than cutting the funding and forcing us to provide the services, which we've already, whatever percent of which our budget is mandated by federal and state government already. So is that clear enough direction?
Yep, I think we're good.
And you'll kind of manage that somehow?
Yep.
Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky.
I just want to comment, you know, and I believe legislators oftentimes want to do the right thing, but sometimes the partisan politics get in the way of that. And they'll be very sympathetic and empathetic and relate to what we're saying. But it's unfortunate, the way we have things today, that we have to be so partisan and can't find a way to resolve these things.
I'm not sure who joined in on the rural caucus room yesterday. Steve made a good point towards the end of the meeting. But one thing, after Steve spoke, I thought, well, I don't want to hog it, so I didn't say anything. But what I was going to suggest to Senator Grant, I forget his last name now, from Herman Town, because he did organize this conservative, you know, eight members, whatever they call themselves. If two members of the Republican Party and two members of the Democratic Party joined forces and voted with each other, they could control the place. And so unfortunately, that is not happening. And if that were to happen, it only would take one or two on each side and just say, we're not going to have these cuts, or we're going to let them, we're going to do the cuts, but we're going to lift the mandate, or whatever it is. It would pull, I mean, it would upset majorly, even though the governor's temperamental already, it would make him even more temperamental on his side. And the Republican leadership would like, well, you know what? For America, it would be the best thing. And I was going to suggest that, but I sent him an email after the rural caucus thing and encouraged him to do that. So really, that's what I think would bring this to a head more quickly for a much more positive outcome. Representative Clark, it was almost a stamp, were there?
I was going to say, you just gave me a compliment by calling me a representative.
I did.
As opposed to a senator.
I did.
So thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, actually, this year, it's a little different. And yes, it's a highly polarized environment, but remember, the House is equally split. They have to go ahead and come up with agreements to even get their bills out of committee. And then the question is, what's happened on the floor? And Commissioner Bertram's point is more than well-taken. I've been trying to figure out for a while why people aren't figuring out one or two or three things they really care about, because they could change the dynamics on the floor. And the Senate's only one vote apart, and they're actually working together pretty well. And that's what's scary, because right now, a House bill that just came out on human services would have a 5% cost shift. It's more than a cost shift that would require us to raise taxes. The Senate, that means both the Republican and Senate, or Republican and Democratic co-chairs, both agreed that that's what they were going to put in their bill. And it's partially because of what their targets are. The Senate actually put in a 2%. That would be hard, it would be less painful, and nobody's changing any mandates yet. So we still have a long ways to go. The truth is, when there's tight times and budgets, these kinds of shifts, gimmicks, are what gets done. And it's hard for them to really see what the real consequences are to people, to our property taxpayers. And we have so many counties around the state, they can't, I mean, we, we work so hard not to be increasing our property taxes, not even more than what people can bear, but just trying to keep them down. There are counties who could go bankrupt with this. And so it's real. I mean, it's, and it's, I hate to say it, bipartisanly real.
Okay, I think we know where we're going with that. Got it, next item, G3, the broadband.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep, the next item is broadband. Back in January, you, you reviewed proposals for two projects. One was a small project in Wakefield Township with like 15 premises, and you already authorized that contract, and that contract has been executed, actually. Now, the other item that you did in January was you directed me to pursue the lowest-cost proposal at, at that time, which was from ARVIG for the project in Collegeville Township. And, and we are ready to enter into that agreement, or recommend that you enter into that agreement. If you recall, that was a project that was a little over a million dollars. At that time, we thought we were going to need to be in that project for quite a bit more than you'll see today. We can partner with ARVIG for $150,000 as opposed to more like $700,000 or $800,000, which we were thinking it would be in the beginning. So that's item number one under broadband. And then the second is to discuss the upcoming round with some ISPs that have, that are seeking support. So if you're comfortable with the ARVIG, you could take that action now, and then we could discuss the, oh, in addition to this, the agreement with ARVIG, they will be applying for a B grant in the next round, and those, those applications are due on April 21st.
So the first motion would be to authorize the county administrator to make a B grant application with ARVIG with a subsidy of $150,000 for Collegeville Township.
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Clark, second. Moves that, Commissioner Notch seconded it. Any discussion on that? The people in Collegeville Township will open, openly be excited about that. So if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. And then the second item, I think, I like the way you summed it up, and I shared that with you last night, where, where you said that you would say, with the condition of either of the, any of the proposals, with the condition that the proposal with the most coverage is preferable. I think that really, one, with limited dollars, that would be the best way to approach that, I think. So that's my thought.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I'll just frame this up a little bit so others can understand. We didn't solicit any proposals for these areas, and it's an area of Grand Lakes, so we're talking about areas in Rockville and St. Augusta and northern part of Main Prairie Township, all areas that weren't participating in the program, and then leaking into some other areas as well. But we didn't solicit proposals, but there's high interest in the providers in getting into that, or providing service to that area. And so in the last week, up until yesterday at 4:00, I've been being contacted by four, four providers that are hoping to get letters of support and, and potentially financial support as well. The scoring is a little different in the B grant. They'll get, if we just support the project, say with a letter, they can get five points out of the 10, and if there's a financial commitment, then they would get 10 points out of, within the grant proposal. So the question is a little bit like previous times where we've had a request from an ISP to support their application, when we have another application within our own program, which we will have with ARVIG in Collegeville. And we've done, we've, sometimes we did it, and sometimes we didn't. There's some thought that there may not be much B money left after this round, so maybe it is, does behoove us to support an application, even though it's outside our program. And, and yes, I did suggest that, I, we, I don't even have maps from, for some of these proposals yet, so it's hard to make a comparison about who's going to cover the most. I have a good feel that, that Vibrant, Meeker Electric, and, and MediaCom have much more coverage than, than the other two parties that are interested in, in our support. So I think it would make sense, and I think we can get them, get the ISPs to answer, you know, just how many parcels would you cover that aren't already covered? Because a map I already saw some run had a lot of areas that are already covered. And I, and I think they would respond to that. And then, if you'd authorize me to do that, I would simply make that analysis and, and do the support, because this needs to be done before your next board meeting. And the other consideration, so that's kind of easy, writing a letter of support, I think. But the next question is whether or not we want to commit some of our leftover dollars to the project as well. And you could see on the back of the page I put in front of you there, I'm sorry, I don't have it on the screen, this all happened a little too quickly, that we have, currently have about $284,000 left in that, in that fund. We are anticipating some refunds, but I can't really quantify those. You can see I've made an estimate there of a million and a half. So I think the fund is going to be solid, and if we're successful with the Collegeville application, we really should have really fulfilled nearly every participating township. So if we are going to deviate and, and support in a small way some areas that didn't participate or our city, maybe, maybe the time is now to do that as well. So I'll answer questions.
So I want to make sure that I'm understanding this, because this has been obviously a long, long process. The, the companies that are doing it, obviously, potentially, depending upon where they're putting the infrastructure, they benefit even if it's not part of us, because then they bring on customers. And there's nothing wrong with that. So it's, it's a win-win. It's, one, it's serving our people, two, it's developing. Do, do providers literally go down the same road with, so if ARVIG's in, does Vibrant come in and put a line in right beside them?
They could. In, in this particular instance, for example, one of the private providers is coming out of their plant, is planning to come out of their plant in Painesville. Another provider is planning to come out of their, come out of the St. Cloud area. I mean, I don't know exactly where the other ones are, but so, and that's why we'll see a little different coverage area, too, as they, as they try to get into that. Rockville, Grand Lake area is really the most unserved. So the answer to that, to your question is yes, sometimes they are in the same right of way, but I don't think very often.
Because to your point, we don't want to, we want to make sure that there's some infrastructure in front of everyone. We don't want to support, or we shouldn't support, in my opinion, where there's already service with another company. Now, if time comes and it gets competitive, that other company wants to put their infrastructure in at their own cost, well, that's on them. But our goal and your goal, and you've done it admirably, is to have everybody covered. And the Collegeville, you know, pocket kind of popped up, whatever, six months ago, and luckily, we're able to address that, but there's still some small pockets out there. So I, do you need a motion to allow you to do that?
Did we have it already in seconds?
No, no, I don't.
No motion.
There wasn't any action if, to do either, to, to give me authorization to support. But therein, I think, is the big question, is how you want to support. Do you want to support it financially? That's.
And I think, again, I, so you do want a motion on that?
Yes.
I think we should support it financially, and I think we should say, the way you worded it, of, you know, doing it in the area that isn't serviced. The provider that provides the most service to the unprovided areas is what I would suggest.
Mr. Chair, so that's the, the provider that's the broadest.
Correct.
It's going to cover, I will make that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Clark makes that motion.
I'll, I'll second that.
Commissioner Persky seconds it.
A dollar amount, did mine? It doesn't need to be a lot if you want to support financially, and I don't think it should be, because we're in the areas that.
Right.
Weren't part of the program.
I don't know if we should limit the dollar amount, because it could be 250, it could be 3, or, or.
It could be 150.
It's your call. What do you want?
Well, you certainly wouldn't want me to go beyond 284,000.
Well, then don't.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair.
If you want to put something straight on it. And I, and I don't think it'll need to be near that, actually.
No more than, you could add then, no more than 284,000.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, my question to you had been earlier, what's your recommendation?
Yeah, I.
I mean, is this just showing that there's some local skin? I mean, us putting something in. It's not us trying to cover the project, especially being mindful of what places did actually put local skin in.
Right. And that's why I think it should be a smaller amount, definitely. I also know that the, that the B rules are different, and we can get the same amount of points on the grant with less dollars. So I'm thinking it can be 150 to 200,000.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to, if it's okay, unless somebody feels strongly, I will amend the motion to, to make it for 150.
Okay.
And I'll second that again.
Okay. And then if you do need more, obviously, you'll have to do what you need to do.
Right.
I like Commissioner Persky's point, when you do the budgeting for this year, well, when you say, I don't want to go over a certain dollar amount, then, then don't.
I picked that number because that's what's actually in the fund right now, so.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky.
And I, I want to, I was going to bring this up after the vote, or after the first vote. First of all, I want to applaud all the board members here. I think we've done a very good job as far as looking at broadband, what the county gets out of broadband, what we've done with our county dollars, what we've done with state and federal dollars. And where we're going with this last piece, again, shows that we're committed in what broadband and Wi-Fi will need to, the kids, the businesses, the families, you know, the school districts. I think, I think we're ahead of many other counties, many other states. My concern, though, Mike, and you've done a very good job, and you've done yeoman's work on this, and that is, what about the future dollars? I want, I want to make sure that we've, we've got it complete. I don't want to see any opportunity for perhaps the state or the feds to clawback any dollars, and then also holding off on promises that were made. So. So the work you're doing there, I think, is fantastic. And again, you, the last few years, you've just done a tremendous service to this county, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. I don't think we voted.
No, we didn't.
I don't think so.
So any discussion, further discussion on the motion to allow Mike to do that up to 150,000? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion passes. Commissioner Notch and Commissioner Persky have done a good job of saying, we need to vote on the proclamation or else I can't sign it.
Right.
Can we get a motion to approve the proclamation of National County Government Month?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Clark, moves that.
Second.
Commissioner Notch seconds it. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, that passes. So the next item would be issues by commissioners. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, any issues?
I have nothing.
He has nothing. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. I think in addition to what we've already talked about in terms of the potential budget impacts on real people and on our county taxpayers, just so that you all know, I mean, I've been spending a lot of time testifying, trying to work with others on what's been called the priority admissions, our county coalition of the sheriffs, the county attorneys, the social service administrators, administrators, and AMC have put a lot of time into trying to come up with getting some actual movement on state capacity for those who have the highest mental health acuity needs, who are languishing otherwise in our jails, or potentially in hospitals, unable to get the treatment they need. This is continuing to be honestly a bear. I mean, it's, it's almost, it's so painful to watch, knowing what's needed and the unwillingness or inability to actually say, yep, we've got to, we've got to bond dollars. The state finally has stepped forward with money from last year that would, once built, would come up with another 50 beds, at least 300 are needed. But honestly, I don't even know how we're going to get that in. And so the question has been, are people just going to sit longer in jails, decompensating? And it's really hard. It's really hard. There's like literally no trick, no, nothing that we can do on our own. I'm saying this out loud because some of the same kinds of folks that could end up where they shouldn't be because they haven't committed crimes that would keep them there are also likely to be hit with some of these other cuts or pushes to increase taxes, to be helping with other services. So it's really complicated, and our staff are amazing, and I just want to do a shout out to those coalition partners. But sometimes, honestly, it feels like we're yelling into a vacuum. The, there ends up being increased folks who are needing services, increased demand, and the state isn't willing to go ahead and take this on. In contrast, they are willing to tell us that we have to go ahead and do new jails and new courts, et cetera, which we, as our one county, are taking on, but they have an obligation statewide, and this does interlink. And so it's, it's really frustrating. I'm saying this to, to everybody in this room and anybody who's listening because these, these are huge issues that have a solution, but the state needs to act. And I'll save anything else for another time.
Thank you. Commissioner Notch?
Just a reminder, Thursday night, we have the town officers meeting in Freeport. I think most of us plan on attending. I will be there.
Commissioner Persky?
I'm hoping to be out in Freeport, too, and I'm hoping they're going to have chicken, but we'll see if that's going to happen or not. That would maybe sway my decision for sure.
I think they are.
They are.
We did the Joe Persky ask.
I bet you're, forget the chicken, it's the dressing.
And you got to put the gravy on top.
Yeah.
So, and I've learned that if you go last, sometimes there's no dressing left, so.
And I've never seen somebody a skin like Persky pile a plate on. I cannot believe it. God bless you.
Just a couple of issues. First of all, it's an election or voting day today, and District 742, they're voting on improvements out at the Apollo High School. So, you know, people should, you know, take, take action on that.
You're alma mater.
Mm-hmm. And then also, just, I had a couple of phone calls, folks from St. Joe concerned, again, about the summer season, about their peace and quiet out there relating to music. And likewise, the Counters here were concerned in St. Wendell about that issue. I hope that we get a chance maybe to address some of those things in the future here. So that's all I got.
Only thing I have is, it's also National Volunteer Month this month and Older Americans Month. So as I said, there's obviously a lot of things going on. And I want to wish everybody a happy Easter because we won't be meeting until after that. So everybody have a, have a happy Easter. With that, am I going to adjourn or just take a break and then adjourn after the work session?
You can take a break, and we'll reconvene then.
Okay, so we'll take a break, and we're going to have a justice work session. And just for the record, that's open to the public, but it's not being broadcast. So we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you.